Twenty-fifth regular meeting, December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, is called to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Madam Clerk, please come roll.
Vice President.
Present.
Counselor Carviallo.
Present.
Counselor Collins. Counselor Knight.
Present.
Counselor Scarpelli.
Present.
Counselor Thang.
Present.
Counselor.
Present.
Present, seven present, zero absent. Please rise to salute the flag.
Let's just survive on the vast states and record. Uh, for the same. Uh, this is a little bit of justice for all.
Announcements, accolades, remembrances, reports, and records. Records, the records of the meeting of December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three were passed to Counselor Collins. Counselor Collins, how did you find them?
I find them in order, and I move for approval.
On the motion of Counselor Collins, seconded by Counselor Carviallo, all those in favor. All those opposed, motion passes.
Motion to suspend the rules to take papers two, three dash four, one, two, two, three dash four, seven, four, two, three dash four, seven, five, two, three dash four, seven, six, and that's it.
On the motion of Vice President Bears to take two, three, four, one, two, two, three, four, seven, four, two, three, four, seven, five, and two, three, four, seven, six out of order, seconded by Counselor Scarpelli, all those in favor, all those opposed, motion passes, two, three, four, one, two, Adam Dash and Associates, Attorneys at Law. This paper has been before us a number of times, so unless counselors need a reminder, I'm happy to hand it over to Attorney Dash, yep, you're good, to provide us with an update on where we stand.
Attorney Adam Dash, forty-eight Grove Street in Somerville. With me are Jerry and Janet Alves back there. We have been working on a draft agreement with staff. I would note that the, I believe that the substance is pretty much all set, and I'm going to tell you what it is. I don't, I've been talking to staff just before tonight. I was told that it is not in final form, so a little disappointing, but that is where we are. If staff are on the call, they can probably weigh in on it. I did want to note that, I mean, I do want to at least explain it to you one last time, because I know a lot of you have put a lot of time into this and been very gracious to have us here and won't be here going forward, so just give you one last opportunity on this, that the amendment was to allow the offices to seek to build three units on the property that would be subdivided into two lots. Currently, the city has a deed restriction preventing any new units or any subdivisions. Again, this amendment would not allow any further subdivision. It would not allow any further units. It would just be one subdivision, three units, and the restriction would continue on in all other forms. The amendment does not mean that the offices can actually build anything. It just allows them to go through the normal permitting process like everybody else. There'll be public hearings and all of that, and maybe they get permits, maybe they don't, but they can't even do that unless the amendment is, the restriction is amended. In exchange for the restriction, the offices would pay an amount to the city in lieu of providing the affordable unit on site, so the city could build affordable housing elsewhere, so the office's disabled son and the sister-in-law themselves could live in the new units, as they may not legally qualify or win the lottery to get the unit. So, the mountain payment in lieu, we did work, talked to the city, and it is in this agreement draft, would be the difference between the fair market value of a three-bedroom unit and the value of that unit as an eighty percent affordable, and that delta would be the payment, so that there's no profit from the unit going to the offices. And then that money would go to the city for building affordable housing elsewhere. That is not in contention. So, I suppose one thing one could do is, I'm not pushing for anything, but if one wanted to, I suppose, the council could vote to approve this pending this, working out a deal, working out the finality of the agreement with the staff, or could kick it to January. I sort of leave it to you. I would just like to, obviously, since you've all been involved in this, to explain it to a whole bunch of new people. It's not really what I would like to do, but we will, obviously, if that's your pleasure. And I guess this just came up before, pretty much, I went to dinner and came over here, so I don't really have a whole lot more to say other than that, but that's where we are with it. I think the substance is pretty much done. The main detail, I think, outstanding is the timing of the payment, because at the certificate of issuance, the certificate of occupancy, they won't have any money, because they won't have sold a unit to get the money to pay the city. So, certificate of occupancy doesn't really do it. On the other hand, I understand the city's position, which is, if you wait till they sell the unit, what if they never sold a unit forever, and the city would never get the money? So, I get, everyone gets each other's point here, and there's got to be a solution here. I can't today, this afternoon, tell you what that is, but that is, if anyone has a bright idea, I'm happy to hear. But that is the situation that we're in, and as far as I understand, that is, in my mind, the only thing that's left unless staff has another issue that I'm not picking up on.
Thank you, Attorney Dash. We do have Director Hunt on the call. Just want to offer that perspective or any comments.
Sure. Thank you, Madam President. So, basically, we do think that there is a place here, we can come to an agreement where there would be a payment to the city, to the Affordable Housing Trust in lieu of actually creating an affordable unit. We think that the logistics, everything of that would be easier. We have not yet worked out exactly how much that payment would be, what the terms, at what point in the process that would be. In my mind, that is really important to approving this, is that we have to have this fully worked out here. He is correct that this doesn't permit anything to actually get built, but we can't condition any of the permitting pieces on this kind of a payment in lieu of an affordable housing unit. It would be pretty significant, whereas we can condition the lift, lifting of the waiver, or lifting of the requirement for, the restriction, sorry. That's, that is actually a very reasonable thing to, to condition the lifting of the restriction on a payment like this. I will mention that, I'm sorry, Senior Planner Danielle Evans is waiting to get let in the Zoom room. She's actually the one who's been working on this the most, and has previous experience with things like this from other communities. I honestly don't see that there's very much to inform other counselors on, the new counselors. I think a lot of them are very familiar with this already, and I would be more comfortable having the council vote once we have a fully negotiated agreement. I will point out that the agreement we're looking at has to have the mayor's signature, and we have not yet had a chance to bring the mayor up to speed on this as well. She was waiting to see what details we could work out before she sort of dug into it, so she hasn't seen. I did send her the document. I should say, I haven't heard back from her, so I assume she hasn't yet had a chance to see it since I sent it to her. So, my preference would be for the council to table this and to vote with the new council. I think you'll have the same turnout, but we would actually have a fully written-out documented agreement. We also have Attorney Shrin Everett on the line, who has been our attorney on this. I don't know if she has anything additional to add. So, I certainly asked her about the portion that this is a public hearing, and the members of the council will be turning over, but we do not need a public hearing in order to approve a, the changing of the restriction. It's just a simple majority vote of the city council. So, thanks.
Thank you. Vice President Bears and Counselor Knight. Counselor Knight.
I might just like to, Attorney Dash, how are you? Good to see you again. How long of a process has this been for the applicants from start to right now? How long ago did they initiate this process?
Four years or something like that. I think-
Can you say that again? Four years?
About four years we've been working on this. We've tried to do a lot of research with the city to figure out why the restriction existed in the first place, and we put in some public records requests, and I got a bunch of documents. There is no answer to that question. Nobody I've talked to, retired people in the city who were there at the time, people I've been referred to, from people I've been referred to, from people I've been referred to in various departments, all the documents that I have gotten, speaking with the law department when there was a city solicitor, nobody had an answer as to why this restriction existed, because before I came to you, I wanted to know why it was there, so that was certainly informed how we proceeded. And then that's, that took us a very long time, and then we did circle through with the mayor's staff and made sure that the mayor conceptually was on board with this, because if the mayor was not conceptually on board with this idea, we weren't going to bother you with it. So, we got sort of that green light to go forward, with the understanding she, of course, hasn't seen the final document. Under, so, yeah, this all took a lot of time.
Have there been any significant delays coming relative to the legal aspect of this? Because we don't have legal counsel or city solicitors, or phone call, and then you're going to wait three days till you get somebody to call you back, four days, five days, a week? I mean, ultimately, what I'm hearing is that, you know, they started the process four years ago, and at some point, it's going to present some sort of economic hardship. And, you know, we can only hold people over a barrel for so long as they try to shake them down in a negotiation going on in another department over here, but if this is just an issue, whether or not the council feels that they should change the date of restriction, I don't see why we should be the ones to hold stuff.
Well, I would note, we're almost there to, to a relief to this point, in that we're, and that since Attorney Everett's been on here, we've been making progress, as you can see.
In full disclosure, I live on Moving Street, you know what I mean? I live at number two hundred. I'm probably three football fields, four football fields away. I'm not a director, butter, or a butter, or a butter, but, you know, just in the interest of disclosure, I'd like to say that.
Is that a motion?
It's not a motion, it's more of a question. I mean, at this point, counsel, it's my last meeting, I'm a lame duck counselor. I'm not going to bring any racial items forward at this point, but, you know, I just kind of find it curious that, you know, it's taken these hard-working individuals in this community four years to get this process really rolling.
I would say COVID delayed us a little bit, too.
May I give you that line, too?
COVID, schmolden, no.
All right. Vice President Bears.
I would motion to, well, I don't want to, if you want to speak, I'll, you can speak, but after your speech, I'm going to motion to table to a date certain.
Thank you, Vice President Bears. Counselor Scarpelli.
Thank you. Counselor Dash, I know that one of the questions that was brought forth was the turnaround for the fire truck. That was a big issue, but that was resolved.
Yes.
So, again, I think the biggest issue is really moving this forward, something that I believe what the family had mentioned at the beginning, that it was a hardship due to a family member, and that's the reason. And I think that, I know my fellow counsel's going to table it, so he allowed me to speak. I would, I would move to, I would move it to, on the vote, but obviously, I don't think it'll have the votes, so I just think that we have a new council coming in. I think that if we can bring them up to speed and hope for the first meeting in January, we get this passed, because this is, I still don't, I don't see why it's an issue that we can't move this forward, because it seems like in good faith, we're, we're going above and beyond. You know, I look at this in a sense that we're kind of holding the Alves hostage here, in a sense that we're, you know, what we're asking them to do, we're going above and beyond right now. And it seems like the city has really, really just wasted a lot of people's time not getting the answers to the right people. To hear the fact the mayor hasn't even seen this yet is a little bothersome to me. That, to me, is just, you know, no disrespect in any way, but attorneys are expensive, correct? And everybody has to make a living, but we're talking about amount of time that's being spent by the Alves family to try to get this pushed forward, for a good reason, and in even having the open dialogue and doing something that I know I wouldn't do. I wouldn't, you know, allow myself to sort of be bullied to try to make this happen. This should be something, our community should be looking to assist each other, and so, you know, I just, I'm a little confused why we can't move this forward in the sense of a time-sensitive situation, so, but I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Collins.
Thank you, President Merle. Thank you for being before us again. We always appreciate you keeping us updated, meeting after meeting. I would second the motion to table this to a date certain, and I certainly appreciate it. I know you've put time into, you know, keeping us briefed on where negotiations and putting together the agreement is at. I think you've done a wonderful job of, you know, putting the project into scope pretty efficiently for us in the past, and it's my hope that if we meet on this at our first or second regular meeting in January, with those final details ironed out, hopefully we can approve this and dispense with it and get you and the offices on to the next step.
That'd be great. I would note, and also for the record, that I think staff and everybody in the city has been working in good faith on this, as you can see. It's just, it's an unusual request, and there's not a lot of, there's no playbook for this, so it's been a little difficult to figure out how to proceed, but we're, we're almost there.
Thank you. I would, I would make the motion to table to January ninth, our date certain.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, President Merle. I wanted to thank your attorney, Dash, and the Alves family for being so patient and negotiating in good faith with this. It's, I, if I were the family, I'd feel super frustrated with how long this has taken. I, my, my, my hope is, I don't want to accidentally undercut the planning department's positions on any of this. I know this is due territory for, for you all to chart, so I would like to know if January ninth is a realistic date, because I would want to vote this out by then.
Do you think January ninth is a realistic-
It is for me, and because we can, I can hop on as quick as I can. I suppose that's more a question for Director, Director Hunt and her staff.
We do have Planner Evans on the call as well. Danielle, is there anything you'd like to add?
Um, yeah, so, we are working on a cash payment calculation, and, and the timing of that, when it would need to be made, and we're still trying to iron out those details. I think we are very close, but there's, we wanted to be a nice, clean vote, not be, basically, there was an RFP to develop this when the city was selling the property, and even that cannot be found. So, it might be somewhere, but I know Attorney Dash has been unable to find it, so I'm trying to have as few pieces of paper and votes floating around. It could be one clean vote, then it'd be easier to track, so that is our preference.
Thank you.
I suppose if staff feels that we can wrap it up by January ninth, we, on our end, we certainly can.
So, we have a motion to table to January ninth for Vice President Bear, seconded by Counselor Say. Correct? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes, table to January ninth.
Thank you, and thank you for your service, for those of you who are not continuing. You've done a good job. I know it's difficult.
Yeah, and you know how difficult it can be.
I do know.
Thank you. Going to four, seven, sorry, two, three, four, seven, four, correct? Two, three, four, seven, four. Offered by Vice President Bears, whereas the Election Commission voted three, one to postpone discussion of the council's request for a report on the two thousand and twenty-three election issues to the commission's January two thousand and twenty-four meeting, now therefore be resolved by the Medford City Council, that a report be placed on the reports due slash deadline section of the council agenda titled two thousand and twenty-three Municipal Election Process Errors and Accountability Report, with the deadline of the January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four regular meeting for a presentation by Elections Manager Ripley and Election Commissioner Chairperson Milleran. For the resolve of the council adds the following request to that report. One, any issues with the process for filing for recount and why it took so long for the candidates and the public to be notified. Two, any process issues in preparation for the recount. And three, what systems will be put in place to ensure prompt and timely notification of any issues or errors to the public to ensure trust is maintained when errors are made. Vice President Bears.
Thank you, Madam President. This is an amendment or addendum to the previous resolution from November fourteenth that we joined with Counselor Scarpelli as well. There was one from Counselor Carviallo, President Merle and I, one from Counselor Scarpelli. Those were referred to the Elections Commission, and the Elections Commission voted three, two, one to postpone their discussion of the item until their January meeting, so I'm not particularly happy that that decision was made. I don't think, I don't think this should be something that waits. Many of us here spent some time at City Hall on December ninth for the first, and what happened to be the only day of the recount. While the results of the recount did not change in any way, the results of the election, I think what was found to be inaccurate was significant and concerning in the sense that if the election had been close, or if any of the races had been close, those numbers would have changed, could have changed the results of an election. You know, there were, the final results, there were almost a hundred and thirty ballots in one precinct that somehow didn't get counted in the unofficial count, right? So, in addition to everything that was in the resolution that we passed November fourteenth, which had to do with all of the things that happened that we knew at the time had happened up until Election Day and on Election Night, the recount also did expose a couple of other items for consideration, and it's incredibly important to the community that we have answers to those questions and answers to the process and fixes to the process and staffing and resources in that department, so that we have confidence that, number one, mistakes that were made in the past aren't going to be made again, and number two, when mistakes are, happen, which in any human endeavor is inevitable, that there will be things that go wrong, the public is made aware and the candidates are made aware right away. I think that's really the most important thing. I know in the past, when issues did occur, you know, and I haven't been involved as long as some other folks here, but Sandy Gale, Clerk Herdabees, others, really did try to get the word out right away. We had this issue. We want you to know what the issue was. We want you to know how we tried to address it, or we brought in to help address it. I know that Fint had done similar things as well, and that has to be how our elections offices operate, right? If there is an issue, you get the word out right away. The, the operating procedure can't be that if there's an issue, you try to fix it without anyone noticing, because that just does not bring trust. So, putting this on, formally putting on an item for this report to be on our agenda with a deadline of January twenty-third, which is our first regular meeting after the next Election Commission meeting, but I am disappointed that the Election Commission, I believe their rationale is that they had to plan for the recount. I understand that. I wish they had had, that they had considered and issued a response to this report in a more timely manner, because there's an election in March. The presidential primaries in March. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Collins.
Thank you, President Merle, and I appreciate you bringing this forward, Vice President Bears. We've spoken at length already in previous council meetings about the original reasons for bringing forward the request for, you know, an election postmortem and a report, the errors and mishandlings that happened on Election Day, which, again, were addressed, which should not have happened, and we need to know exactly how they won't happen, happen again, and then the issues and mishandlings that happened leading up to the recount and needing a full accounting of why those happened and how exactly we'll know they won't happen again. You know, to me, this is on the institutional scale, you know, an example of people don't plan to fail, they fail to plan. We've discussed how going into this election, there were serious concerns about the capacity of the Elections Department, because its staffing had dropped so low, below its previous levels, and I think we really need to see, we need to see the diagnostic of what exactly happened and why, and we need to investigate, first, the Elections Commission, the Elections Department, and then as a community, you know, as a council, we need to investigate what needs to happen so that we can go into our three very consequential elections in two thousand and twenty-four, with the Elections Office and the Elections Commission feeling professional and organized and competent, so that every voter and every resident in Medford can feel confident about the three, again, very consequential elections that we will have in two thousand and twenty-four. And I do think it bears emphasizing that by the time that we hear back from the Elections, the Elections Commission at our January meeting, it will be less than two months until the first of those three elections. So, I think everybody shares a sense of disappointment that it's necessary to have this conversation at all, that it's necessary to put a deadline on it, because we haven't gotten a, really, any response so far, but if it takes imposing accountability at the outset until this commission and the department can be imposing accountability from within, it's, it's non-negotiable. Thank you.
Thank you. Need further discussion from counselors?
Madam President.
Counselor Carviallo.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, voter integrity is probably our utmost right in our country. That's what our country was founded on, is people's rights to vote. People have died for the right to vote, so I don't understand why it's going to take a whole nother month to figure out what went wrong, when everybody in this room knows went right wrong. I'm a little disappointed in that, and that'll be up for the new, new group to do, but when, when, when people keep getting calls saying, "I'm never voting in the city of Medford again," it's a shame, because that's not how it's supposed to be, never how it ever should be. We made mistakes. Everybody knows what the mistakes are. We don't need another month to wait and figure out what we did wrong. It should be, it should be being addressed now. The cover-up is always worse than the crime, Madam President.
Thank you. Counselor Knight.
Madam President, thank you very much, and Counselor Carviallo is absolutely right. The cover-up is always worse than the crime, and Counselor Bears is right. Trust in the public process is paramount, especially when it comes to elections. So, why is it that we have an Elections Commission that's going to go hide under their bed when the largest issue in this community's come up in a very long time? I don't understand how an Election Commission can vote three to one to postpone reporting back to this community the flaws and errors that occurred during their mismanagement and incompetency following that election. I sat up here the evening of the election, and I heard them read off the figures. I heard them read off the total vote count, and I said to myself, "You're missing like four thousand votes. You're wrong. You don't know what you're talking about, Counselor. You don't know what you're talking about. I know one plus one equals two. I know one plus one equals two." The way that election was handled was the most embarrassing sight I've seen in a long time. I worked on political campaigns since I was seven years old. I'd never seen anything handled like that before in my life. The Elections Manager was not in this room the whole entire night. I was here from eight oh five until almost one o'clock in the morning, and the Elections Manager was nowhere to be seen. All the vote totals in bags, unattended, all over this room. Individual members of the Elections Commission, unsupervised, alone, going through the bags, looking through them, rifling through them, and you wonder why stuff is going missing. You wonder why we can't put it together, Madam President. That was the biggest embarrassment I've ever seen in my life. Now, shockingly, we do have a CEO in this community who's been extremely quiet, extremely quiet about what happened during this election, which leads me to believe that this behavior is something that's acceptable with this current administration, because I know if it were me, and the integrity of my election would be in brought into question, I'd be sure that the department heads and the board members, by way of which I appointed personally, because I'm the mayor, would have their heads rolling down the street. The way that they treated Election Day volunteers, people that wanted to participate in the process and be involved, was shameful, and for them to now vote to postpone the discussion just tells you what kind of culture we have here at City Hall, Madam President. Thank you very much. I thank the council for bringing this paper forward.
Thank you, Counselor Scarpelli.
Thank you. If, if Counsel Vice President would entertain, could we add, add something to the, the motion? I'd like to get the attendance record for all of the members on the Election Commission, because I think that's important. From what I gather, we don't have too many members that are actually committed to that commission, and I don't think we're taking it as serious as we should. My biggest piece with this situation is accountability. We've seen very, very good people be marched out that door for not even a quarter of the concerns that we've, we've witnessed on Election Day, and to, to not hear or see any movement or understand any process that has gone on is a disgrace. I haven't heard from one commissioner. I haven't heard from, from, from anybody except for the coordinator who sent us a message saying that the, the election is now certified. And my counsel, Counselor Carviallo said, the biggest, my biggest problem is, when I was a young man, when I was in high school, and we, we, we took the, everybody had a mandatory class called civics, and you learned about our government. You learned about the respect you should give this process. I still remember, my son just, just left a minute ago. We talked about how Mrs. Lasky ran the fourth grade presidential election in her classroom, and how important everything was, and how organized everything should be. I wish Mrs. Lasky ran this last election, because Counselor Carviallo, again, is right. When people don't want to vote, good people, good hard-working people that took pride in coming to that ballot box every municipal election, have looked, they've looked me in the eye and said, "They'll never vote again." They have no faith, and, and I truly thought that maybe coming out ahead of this could have helped that, but instead, we just fed into the rhetoric. And I said it the day that we had the first issue. I said what? I said, "Be careful, because perception is reality," and it's exactly what happened. So, moving forward, I know that we'll have a new council, but I think as this council looks to move people forward and look at our budgetary processes, we have to start looking for people. If the city administration's not going to hold people accountable, then we're going to have to make sure that they, that they know that this council is going to be strong enough to make sure they, they hold their people to the feet of the fire, because this has been an absolute laughing stock across the Commonwealth, and the fact, I'll be honest with you, I'm disgusted with the Secretary of State's office. Reached out to them, haven't heard anything. Reached out to them, haven't heard anything. This is what they're all about. If this is what if this is what the Secretary of State and our governor sees that that's appropriate, look what's happening. It's a trickle down effect. Now, who knows how many people aren't going to come out for the next elections? And why? No one's told us anything. No one's even talked to me. I got a bunch of fluffy, I'm getting a lot of emails, fluffy emails, you know, that you know, wishing me luck, a happy birthday, congratulations. But no one is still, from that commission, has talked to me about, George, this is what's going on. And they're good people. And then for the recount, I know I wasn't there, but I I talked to a few people that came here, gave their time to help with the process. And I heard our coordinator, our Elections Coordinator was verbally getting in people's faces and disrespecting people to the point where the attorney from the from the candidate's side had to step in and say, please do not address any of our people. Talk to me. That's a disgrace. So there's a lot more that's going to go on in that meeting when they come back. But my biggest thing right now is, and a lot of people that have talked to him on every side, every side, this isn't just, you know, the the George Scott Pelley side, this is every side. Everybody's watching to see where the accountability piece is. That's what everybody's waiting to see. And if you want to give them the benefit of the doubt until the January 29th, so be it. But if you're going to come up to that podium on January 29th and give us give us fluff, be prepared because this one councillor is going to ask some serious questions. And I'm going to be calling people out directly. So thank you, Madam President, and I rest my case.
Thank you. Counsel Carvillo.
Madam President, thank you. If Counselor Behrs wouldn't mind amending this to put one more thing on that to why it took almost five hours to shut off the central tabulator? When all all machines are supposed to be shut off at 8 o'clock, why did it take till almost 1 o'clock in the morning for them to shut down the central tabulator? And make that phone, if you wouldn't mind adding that on to that.
Thank you. Any further discussion from Councillors?
What was that? Did you say give them a raise, councillor? I missed that. What was that?
Motion to approve as amended, Madam President.
On the motion by Vice President Behrs, seconded by Counselor Scarpelli, as amended by Counselor Scarpelli, and amended by Counselor Carvillo. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. The next resolution is for me unless Councillors object. I can just read it from the chair. 23475, offered by President Morrell. Be it so resolved that the council explore and consider language for an ordinance regulating blasting and earth removal within the city. This is something I didn't call for public participation, but no, I didn't know. But you you always can't. I mean, if you want to wait for public participation or councillors, I know we, yeah, we'll get, yeah, we'll we can go back to it. I apologize. 23475, offered by President Morrell. Be it so resolved that the council explore and consider language for an ordinance regulating blasting and earth removal within the city. This is something I already introduced, but apparently I didn't. This was originally kicked off, of course, by the giant hole that exists, continues to exist, that's still not houses, on Winter Street that we had myriad complaints about, lots of issues, and then I think was kicked off again as the, we're looking at that due restriction, understanding there's a lot of ledge in that area. My intention in this is not to, and this is obviously for the future of the council, if not, my intention is not to say, hey, there's no blasting, but just understanding that a lot of the issues relating from the Winter Street project is that we have nothing on the books as far as regulations and permits and steps that people have to follow when they're actually doing that. So making sure we have some steps that make sure that our the residents and neighbors in the area aren't disturbed in the way that they were with the Winter Street project, and it's done in a completely different way that respects our residents and makes sure that we have permits, approvals, and process in place to make this a much better experience should it go forward in any place in the city than what happened on Winter Street. So going to Counsel Say.
Thank you, President Morrell, for introducing this. As as you might know, I'm very excited about this. I'm I am very much looking forward to leading on, helping lead on this in the new council. What we saw on Winter Street is not acceptable to the residents of the city, and we need more safeguards for future action. We know that the housing market is hot and it's becoming more profitable to blast off ledge and build more housing. We we just need more community engagement, more community conversations about what that process looks like, informing residents of what to expect, having regulations of best practices, basically taking lessons that we've learned from the Winter Project, Winter Street Project to future projects. And so I'm very grateful that you introduced this.
Thank you. Counsel Carvillo.
Thank you, Madam President. Something I brought up about six months ago was this the Winter Street Project. But, you know, blasting is never a good thing, you know, but, you know, most people blast the day here or there, and that's about it. This company's been blasting nine years, nine years, okay? It is a commercial business. They are selling the rock. Okay, they should be taxed. It's a commercial business. They're paying on an open space of land. I thank you for putting this forward and I hope that this never happens again, what happened at Winter Street, because you live there, other people we know live there. And that's not even close to even stopping. Because they keep, the rock just keeps coming out there and you'll be like, you'll be lucky to still be living. Your 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 son will be 10, he'll be, he'll be living in one of those houses by the time the rock is done.
Thank you, Counsel Carvillo.
Madam President, motion referred to zoning planning development subcommittee.
Any further discussion from Councillors? Any members of the public wish to speak on this? On the motion of Vice President Behrs to revert to the zoning subcommittee, seconded by Councillor Say, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. Going three, two, 23476. To Honorable President, members and members of the Medford City Council, regarding Community Preservation Committee appropriation request, on behalf of the Community Preservation Committee, I respectfully request and recommend that your honorable body approve the following recommendations of the Community Preservation Committee requesting the appropriation of 115,000 from the CPA General Reserve to the Royal House and Slave Partners for the Royal House Roof and Gutter Restoration Project, requesting the appropriation of 145,000 from the CPA General Fund to Shiloh Baptist Church for the Shiloh Baptist Church Construction Project. The project will be tracked in the Community Preservation Fund that the CPC recommendation letters are attached and incorporated. Thank you for your consideration. Respectfully submitted by our local mayor. Any discussion, questions in the council? I know we have Teresa here. Seeing none. Motion of Counsel Knight to approve, seconded by Counselor Scarpelli, Mr. Clerk, Madam Clerk, apologies, please call her over.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes, seven of the informers, you're going to have the motion passes.
Madam President, while we're in suspension, motion to take public participation.
And the motion of Vice President Behrs to take public participation while they're suspended, seconded by Councillor Say, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. Public participation, Melanie, if you'd like to. In general, but I mean, in general, but.
Hi, Melanie Tringali, 116 Forest Street. I'm actually one of the candidates that requested the recount of the recent election. And I just want to recognize and appreciate Counsel Behrs for adding those additions to the agenda this evening. I think it's really important that we have integrity in our elections and that they're accurate. In addition, I would like it noted that, you know, after the election, there was a lot of discussion about the process. And though each one of these city council members agreed that there was an issue with the process, you all agree that there was no change in the accuracy of the election. Well, the election was not accurate. The 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 outcomes may have not changed, but the accuracy was not accurate. We missed over 130 ballots that were not counted, which Counsel Behrs had mentioned. But in addition, and I think this is something that should be addressed, is that there was tabulations, there were several precincts that had tabulations where there were more ballots counted than actually tallied than there were counted. In two precincts, there was 40 ballots more that were tallied than was actually counted during the blocking process, and there was another precinct that had 50. In addition, there were others that had smaller amounts of 11 and 15. But that, to me, is a serious issue with the tabulation machines. So I I hope, my hope is that somehow those will be addressed as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one more person. Anyone address the record, please?
Mayor 373 Riverside Ave, Medford. Counselor Knight, it's going to be, I'm sorry to see you go. So it's been a pleasure. Sorry I had to pull myself away from.
We do have the nice words about councillors section coming up on the agenda too.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you did that already.
No, if you want, if you're up to say nice words about councillors, we're getting to that next.
Absolutely. No, but but other things too. I'm sorry. No, I was just going to give him some because he was going to end this before I could talk. Transparency seems to be like a common theme here among my years in the in the city. I've been here since 2014. This council was actually very much a proponent of trying to bring transparency back to a process with the 61 Locust Street Project, to which I commend the council at the time, and and some of you were still a part of that, which is great. So then I find out that through the grapevine that there's a potential for having 50 to 75 migrant families directly across the street from my house, sorry, diagonally across the street from my house on Riverside Ave in a commercial project. Haven't heard anything about it. So to the good councillor Scarpelli's point about no transparency or lack of transparency from folks in the administration, we have the CEO who was part of the council at that time of the 61 Locust Street Project, who was very much a proponent of transparency from the city. So I got to ask, like, what is going on? And can someone please make public the rumors that have been, you know, talked about? Because as a resident in an adjacent building and a neighborhood, and I know that my neighbors know nothing about this, it's kind of a big deal. Especially because these sorts of things are also on the news, especially in New York City, where they they can't handle what's happening to their their properties. So this, I guess, is a commercial property that now we're going to all of a sudden start housing people in. And I just want to know what's going on because I live there. I know some of you don't, and it's not in your neighborhoods, but it is in mine. And I have two small kids at home, and so I I'm concerned about things like safety. That's my number one thing that I'm concerned about. I don't have a good feel either way. It's not that I'm opposed to it, but with no information, it seems like it's kind of underhanded. And it's kind of a theme that I'm seeing in this city's government to to the point of, you know, two topics ago, between elections and zoning, so on and so forth. So I'd really appreciate some answers if someone can give it, and like, let's make this for the public record instead of just rumors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. We received an email, Nate, that the state government is in, the governor's, you know, the executive office, the state government is in negotiations with a private property owner at that location for housing of migrant families. That's all we know. And then I believe that the mayor's email also said that they're trying to negotiate to have the city in some way involved in that process. But right now, the state and the private property.
I can read it.
You have the email?
Yeah. If I I can share this with.
Sure, that'd be great.
Says temporary shelter. Hello, Representatives, Senators, members of Medford City Council, Medford School Committee. I wanted to give you all a heads up on the ever evolving matter. At the end of last week, I was informed that 400 Riverside Ave was being explored along with other sites as a possible temporary winter emergency shelter for migrant families on the waitlist. The state was only going to pick one site, from my recollection, on a phone call. The the families would only each stay a few nights before they would be transitioned. The shelter was going to run through April and start with those families currently staying at 10 Park Plaza and may build up to no more than 75 families. The state, excuse me, 75, the state asked for a walk through today, and at the time, the Commissioner Rice relayed different terms to us, all regarding capacity and length of stay through June. He also said that this was the site they planned to try to move forward with. I have another call with the state tomorrow to try to get more clarity. This is 110,000 square foot site that meets the needs of the state, and I'm worried about the burden it will cause with city staff, the school department, and et cetera. It reaches the capacity that we are unable to handle. I will follow up with you, which we have more information. That was on 12/5. So this is, I thought this was public record. I didn't realize that. I didn't know that no one else knew. It's the first time that I heard that no one.
I mean, I'm sorry, I don't have Facebook, but.
Yeah, this isn't Facebook, but.
I live diagonally across.
Yeah, I would assume we we should have a, we should call for a community meeting immediately, maybe somewhere in that area that that we can let our neighbors know because from what I gather, it doesn't sound like the mayor's supporting this either. So if this is something on the state level, I think it's very, it's very important that, you know, that that's the biggest thing when I I heard about, when I heard this, I talked to a couple of teachers. And they they were confused because they, the increase in numbers in the elementary schools, especially kindergarten level, I guess they've added an extra kindergarten to every single school already. And there was some thought that we've already let families in, and that's that's the issue. But if that isn't the issue, the fear from the, our educators, that any influx, now remember, anybody that that moves into our community as a child, they have every right to go to school in our city. And this is going to put a huge burden, a burden that I don't think that can meet the capacity that we offer right now, both at the McGlynn and the Roberts for sure. I I don't know if the other schools have space. From what I was told, that there aren't many places. Now, the other issue we heard was with the closure of the Salem Street Fire Station back in our area. I I say our area because I grew up in North Medford. The idea of any more, an influx of this magnitude with only one true station that's on that side, really, other than coming from the main station and then the heights, it's really, it's really going to play an impact with public safety. So there's a lot of issues here that I appreciate you bringing this forward today because I think that it's it's scary at many different levels. And again, like I said, I from what I gather, the mayor is really confused with this whole situation as well. So not to support her in any way and understanding it, but this is something that one thing we should do is have a community meeting or something should go out saying what she just said in this email. That I I personally thought, because this is public record, I thought it was already out there. So I didn't know that. So I apologize. I wish I knew.
Thank you. Counsel Collins.
Thank you, President Morrell. You know, appreciate you asking the question in public forum. My impression is that nothing is certain here. We got this heads up that Counselor Scarpelli, thank you for sharing that. My impression from reading, receiving that same communication a couple of weeks ago is that this is still in flux, and the mayor is still in conversation with state partners, who is in conversation with this landlord to determine when the state picks a site, will it be this one or will it be another one? And I think in this case, no news really is no news. So I just don't want us to get ahead of ourselves. It's also, and again, I I think if this were to go forward, we should get, you know, solid answers from the people who really know for sure. But I think the conception of this temporary shelter is not to be a month's long home for any of these migrant families. It's more like a waystation. Families would stay for a couple of nights. So I don't think it's in any way certain that this would cause a burden on our public school system because we're not going.
And this is what, this is why it's a, it's an issue because I, and and I I took that as that they changed that. The original phone call was for temporary, and then it was extended. So so I I'm looking at it totally different. So I think that's why, I think having some clarity, I think that's why really just having some clarity from the main office, I think would be important, so.
Thank you. And yeah, I think it's certainly certainly be great to circle back with the executive office to ask the question of what's the status? Is this going forward? I interpreted that email as not, we're extending this so that families, any given family will stay through June, but rather this will remain a waystation for two or three nights at a time, just for a couple more months. So certainly appreciate all the questions asked. My assumption is that this is just certainly still up in the air, as many, you know, large infrastructural, you know, social infrastructural, or if I could, I also think that, you know, certainly asking for an update, I'm sure that, you know, trying to sort this out at the end of the year. But, you know, sort of recentering on, you know, the state, we know that we have a shelter crisis in Massachusetts at this time of year. If this is an opportunity where marshalling state resources, Medford can be a port in the storm for, you know, vulnerable migrant families, I think that's another important safety piece to put into the conversation is the lack of safety that's putting these families into the situation to begin with.
Absolutely.
Counsel Say.
Just a quick short note. In the email that Counselor Scarpelli read,
In the email that Counselor Scarpelli read, the mayor said she, she would follow up with us with details, and we haven't received a follow-up. So that's another reason, because we just don't know a lot of these details either.
Vice President Bear.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to, in terms of like next steps and actions, this wasn't on the agenda. We shouldn't debate that, since it wasn't on the agenda, it wasn't publicly posted. We're talking about transparency, we shouldn't take action on things that we didn't let the public know we were going to talk about. I just wanted to take it back to the, that I did ask a follow-up of the mayor. The mayor said the state, basically, if the state signs a contract with the property owner, that's the arrangement. The city has no input, no involvement unless the state wants to give the city involvement. So if the state and the property owner sign an agreement, that's what's going to be what happens. It doesn't, the city doesn't have, the state comes in, they can do what they want. So that's, that's where this is at, is my understanding. Because I wanted to follow up specifically on that question, and I believe the mayor's email is written in the way that, to show specifically concern that if the state and the property owner just make an agreement without considering the city, since they don't legally have to consult the city, and the city, the city doesn't own the property, you know, it's a private, private land, and the state is trying to pay essentially leased private property for their own purposes. Her concern, to my understanding, reading of the email and my follow-up question, was that the city be consulted and engaged in that process in some way. But that essentially the state can just sign an agreement with this private property owner if they wish to do so.
Madam President.
Counselor Knight.
I, I would find it very interesting if the mayor could point out when she did become aware of these circumstances. You know, she's remained relatively quiet about it, with the exception of a press release. And historically, that office has been really good at press releases and social media. So the kind of concerns, Madam President, it makes me scratch my head and not wonder if the mayor had knowledge about this before Halloween and didn't share it with the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I, I guess, just one last comment. I certainly appreciate Counselor Collins, you saying that nothing has happened yet. I also remember being part of the community where, with the 61 Locust Street project, we were told the same thing, and it was basically, sorry, too late. And the time to address it was beforehand. So there's certainly folks in my neighborhood that, you know, if they're made aware of something early, would definitely like to voice their opinion when it can be heard versus being told, sorry, too late. So that's where we're coming from. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to revert back to regular order of business?
Motion, second.
The motion of Vice President Bear, second by Counselor Collins, all those in favor? All those opposed, motion passes. Going to 23471, offered by Vice President Bear. Be it resolved by the Medford City Council that we commend Counselor Carviallo for his outstanding service on the Medford City Council from 2012 to 2024. Vice President Bear.
Thank you, Madam President. Counselor Carviallo has served with me the entire time that I've been on the city council, and we've served through a pandemic, zoning recodification, two city elections since I was elected, I think 15, 16, 17 ordinances maybe at this point. And I have been really lucky to learn from Counselor Carviallo, to work with Counselor Carviallo on, especially on development projects, and trying to engage property owners, trying to engage people who want to come to the city and build new, good things in our community. I think sometimes we've been successful. Sometimes we haven't been as successful as we wanted to be. And I personally really want, and I'm hoping, if Carol lets you, that you will give a little more time and give me a call if you see a good opportunity or you hear someone who wants to come to the city and wants to talk to a city counselor about that. So, but I also think you've more than earned some time off, time with family, after many, many years of public service, not just on the council, but before your time on the council in volunteerism and service to the community. So thank you, and I will miss you as a colleague. And I hope that you get to spend many vacations getting, you know, suntanned and enjoying some time in warm places.
Thank you. Counselor Scarpelli.
Thank you. It's difficult for me, because I, when you spend so much time in people, it's not just every other Tuesday now, or it was every Tuesday, but my first two phone calls on the way to work every morning was to Counselor Carviallo, then to Counselor Knight. What I want to applaud you, Rick, was, is for teaching all of us to understand why we do what we do. And I think people have forgotten that, and I think last meeting was a pretty good indication of where we were. Rick Carviallo, the Rick Carviallo I know, no one understands how much you've done for the city. What's great about a person that does things, hey, but, listen, it's great when the camera's in your face of people taking pictures, of people talking about you, and you're standing up and shaking hands and cutting ribbons, because I know a lot of people that do that and love it. It's all ego-driven. But the Rick Carviallo I know, that I'm honored to call my friend, has always done things behind the scenes. And I've always admired that about you, Rick. I've always tried to, I've tried to emulate it. It's very difficult to do. And then while running a family and running a business and taking care of dad, that's, that's, and, that's in a home and, and understanding, you know, what, everything that, that goes on in a person's life, you still have time to feed the hungry. You still have time to build a deck for a person that can't afford it, for a handicap ramp. When a veteran needs something, it's Rick Carviallo they call. And I, I used to be, I, I, to be honest, I was so jealous of how you did that. And, but it also made me proud that I've learned from the best. I've sat behind this rail with some amazing people. Some amazing people that, when I sit and talk about all these different people in our lifetimes that have lost, we've lost, and they've moved on to the, the big, the big Mustang land in the sky, I look at and I say, who's going to take that place? And I was fortunate, because I see people like Counselor Marks and Counselor Falco and Counselor Knight and you being the, the Mount Rushmore of that, that group. I don't want to get emotional, because I, I think that this is more than just, you've given enough. Zach is right. When it came, when you saw the city falling, no one else had the guts to stand up, and you stood up. You stood up tall than any man I've ever seen in my life, other than my dad. You didn't hide from anything. You fought every single day to make things right. And I'm honored to be your friend. So I hope I can make those phone calls in the morning still. And I, sometimes I think Dina gets jealous, because I don't pick up her call, and I'd say, I'm on the phone with Carv. And, and, but she knows. So for your family, people that I love, Carol, you've been amazing to make sure Rick is here with us, and I don't think he's ever missed a meeting. And if I missed a meeting, I'd always get an email, a text message right away saying, where are you? And I felt guilty to say, my God, Rick, I'm stuck at work. Because no matter what, even after the election, he was still here. Even after the election, people are still calling him. He was at my, he, 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 he was at the door the other day, and I was like, after the election? And I said, what are you doing? He had a truck full of turkeys. He says, do you know anybody who needs a turkey, any family that needs a turkey? And that's what I'm talking about. That's what we're going to miss in the city. People don't realize that. And it's something that, when I see your grandchildren, I make sure they know how proud they should be of their partner. And Rick, you've done an amazing job to set a standard for the Carviallo family. So my friend, all I can say to you is I wish one day George Scarpelli leaves a, leaves a legacy like Rick Carviallo, because it's not Armin anymore. All Armin did was win a few football games. Rick Carviallo is what we should all aspire to. So I will miss you. I appreciate everything you've taught me. I've appreciated you, the phone calls that you've, you've called me and set me straight. When I was going to go stray, you pulled me back. And I hope I still get those phone calls, because we know it's not going to be easy. President Zach Bearz. Imagine Ricky? A joke, and of course, but I, I love you, my friend. I'm, I'm proud that this journey in our lives made us brothers. And, and I thank you and I apologize.
Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor Carviallo, it's, it's been an honor to serve alongside you. Nobody knows, I have the best seat in the chambers, because Rick has the best gossip. But you've always given me, you've always offered me advice, unsolicited advice, that's been true every time. Solicited advice, that's been very useful. You know, I know that you, you care about the success of this community, and you care about the success of this city, and you care about the success of this council. No matter who's behind the rail, you want us to be doing the best work that we can for the benefit of the people that live here, and that's evident in everything that you do, in how you spend your time. So thank you for your partnership with me. Thank you for working with me in good faith every week over the past two years. Thank you for your service for so many years. And excited to see what you do next.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel, Counselor Carviallo, Rick, it's been such a, such an honor serving with you. I think on this side of the chambers, there's such a strong camaraderie with the three of us. And it's always a pleasure to walk in and see you and Kit here. And as Kit says, gossiping, but for me, it's really just learning more about this city, learning more about how our city works. You've never failed to be a teacher, and we've talked a lot about this, but you, you've truly taught me a lot. I see you as a mentor here in Medford. And there's, you know, from who, who to call in City Hall to do what, to who to talk to on City Council. You know, there's, that's the job aspect of it, but there's also the personal aspect of it. You know, people I should meet, introducing me to people, a lot of that support, you know, I, it really means a lot. And I, I've been really glad that we've spent these last few years supporting each other so much. We bumped into each other so much, and we've really become really strong friends. I remember really clearly the day I received an email from you right after I announced my candidacy my first time. And it was just such a sweet email, a really like helpful email, and encouraging one, too, that uplifted that whole day. I remember you talked about how we met with, when I got the Kiwanis Scholarship back in, back in high school. And I think there's just that long, long history between us two that has brought us closer and closer throughout time. And I'm truly going to miss you being here. I'm going to miss you being, being with us and walking into the chamber and you're hearing so, hearing all your fun stories and your institutional kind of memory, too, all that advice and that wisdom that brings to us. I'll miss that a lot, but as you know, and as, as I've told you, my phone, phone line's always open for you. You know, feel free to call me. And, you know, please enjoy your, your, your days on the beach in Mexico. And, you know, if we miss, if you miss, if we miss you a little too much, we'll bring City Council to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Knight.
Madam President, thank you very much. Ricky, first things first, your turn to pay at the Mets tomorrow morning. I've served on this council for 10 years, and I've never, ever served a year without you. And it's been a great ride. You know, I think back to when I first had the opportunity to meet you. I think I was in kindergarten, I was with your son, Richard, running across High Street, going over to Hastings Lane, visiting the house. And, you know, a lot's transpired since those times. And now here I am, serving with you as a colleague. And I've had the opportunity to not only, you know, spend a lot of time around your family and your children, but also your grandchildren. And I really think that, that shows what you're all about. You're a true family man, and you're a true throwback to that old-school politician. You're the type of guy that when someone calls you on the phone, you call them back. And if they don't answer the phone, you show up at the door, because you truly care about people in this community, and you want to make a difference. And rest assured, Ricky, you have, you really have. You've done an excellent job, and it's been an honor and a privilege to serve with you. And it's even more bittersweet to walk out the door with you. So with that being said, thank you very much for your service. I do think that there are a couple of people in this audience that haven't been recognized yet this evening, that I know you're going to take a chance to recognize. But for the past, what is it, 12 years now? Your family's been very good at throwing you out of the house, letting you get out here and, and serve the people of this community. And a lot is to be said about a family that's so willing to share such a great man with so many people here in this community. So thank you, Carol, and Lauren, and Richard, and Nikki, for letting us have a piece of Ricky for the past decade-plus.
Thank you. And if I could. Counselor Carviallo, I have a tremendous amount of respect for you and what you've brought to this council. As everyone has said, you absolutely put your money where your mouth is. I know anytime a constituent has an issue, you're either on the phone or you're down at City Hall. I think anytime I've been at City Hall, no matter how many days I'm here, someone's always saying, Rick was just here, you know, fixing whatever issue. And you don't hear about it the la, the large majority of the time. You're not at the council meeting saying, I did this, this, and this. You quietly do a lot of things for a lot of people. And that makes, that's a really, it's just a really positive thing for the city and for individuals. And as Counselor Scarpelli said, you put it all out there, running for mayor, which is just, it takes a tremendous amount of courage and time and dedication to do that. And no matter who you talk to, regardless of who they were supporting for mayor, there was never a bad thing that could be said about Rick Carviallo the person. You know, whoever politics may lie, everyone could say that you're a tremendous person. You leave a, just a vast amount of knowledge when you leave this body, and we're going to be, or they're going to be a little bit poorer for it. But I think to Vice President Bear's point, I know that you're just a short phone call away when they have those questions. So I, you know, you being the kind of person you are, I think that's just a little bit of comfort, knowing we're losing you, but we know where to find you, and you'll give us a little bit of your time once more. So I thank you for that. And I know there's folks here who want to speak in the audience, but I know if, if you want to speak now, or if you want to wait for everyone to kind of say their piece. Vice President Bear.
I just wanted to add one more thing, and, and sorry to speak at a, a second time already, but I think it's a testament to how much you've done, your service to the city, your service to your colleagues, your devotion to your family, that none of us mentioned, that you also got us a brand-new library. And I just, you know, again, it's a beautiful place that thousands of people are using every day that wouldn't be here if you hadn't, if you hadn't put in incredibly hard work to get it here, to get it funded after the fact. And it's going to be there for generations and, and have your name in a few places on it, as is well-deserved. So I just wanted to say that, and, and also to say that this council, I think especially this term, we don't agree all the time, but we care for each other. We, we agree, we agree to disagree, and we know that, we, we all care so much about Medford. And I think you, you lead with that, right? We've disagreed on many things, but I've never felt like you didn't respect me and I didn't respect you, and I think that's incredibly important. So thank you.
If folks want to speak, I don't know if Rep. Donato, if you want to start, we want to start. Former Counselor Marks.
Thank you, Madam President. Michael Marks, 37 Wellington Road. It's an honor to be here tonight, Rick, to honor you for your 12 years of commitment and dedication to this community. And, you know, I, I can honestly say, as, as been eloquently stated here tonight, that you are a man of results and didn't let anything get in the way. Didn't let politics get in the way, personalities. You wanted to see things happen. And as Counsel Vice President Bear's just mentioned, the library, right? A little thing like the library came to fruition because Rick thought out of the box and said, you know what? We need this for our community. We need this for our residents. And it was you that pursued that dream and, and why it became to a reality. Another issue that we'd even mentioned, and I don't even think we've touched the tip of the iceberg here, is an issue that was near and dear to me when I first got on the council in 2002. is an issue that was near and dear to me when I first got on the council in 2002. And that was to create an art center in our community. And I had the keys to the Swan School in my hands. And every Saturday and Sunday, I used to open the building and let the artists roam the building and we were gonna put an art center in the Swan School. That never came to fruition and I worked on creating an art center for 19 years after that. And I was responsible as one member, creating Arts Collaborative MEFFIT. Our sole responsibility was to create an art center in this community. And for three to four years, we looked at the Hegman Center and realized that building would have cost hundreds of thousands of dollars to bring it up to a reality. And then one day, we got a phone call and it was from Counselor Carviallo that said, I have a community public-private partnership that's gonna allow an art center to come on Mystic Ave. You're not gonna have to pay anything for the first 10 years. They're gonna suit the building to your need, ample parking. We're gonna have community art classes. We're gonna have artist space. All for nothing. And by the way, January 20th of next year, they can have a ribbon cutting. MEFFIT's first art center in this community came to fruition because of this man right here that put together a public-private partnership to make that happen. And I'm a little envious, it took me 20 years, it took him 20 minutes, but that's all right. It came to reality and that's the most important thing.
Did I say something?
Absolutely.
My second phone call was to Counselor Marks to let him know about it.
Well, and I appreciate that.
Right there, that was the call. But my first phone call was to Counselor Marks.
You know, as you hit the nail on the head, George. It's almost like you stole my speech because honestly, I mean, you look at someone's character and we're celebrating Rick for 12 years. Rick's been dedicated in this city for five decades. Rick did the reverse. Usually people get elected, then they start getting involved in the community. Rick was involved for five decades and then got elected and continued to do what he did from the previous five decades. As you mentioned, feeding the most needy in our community. Helping veterans, whether they had a leaky roof or needed accessibility ramp to their homes. You know, those are the type of things that, you know, I think go unnoticed because there's no print paper anymore, there's, you know, there's no really way of getting the message out. But those are things that Rick did because he wanted to do them, not for any fanfare. And, you know, I personally, Rick, you know, I have to say, when I was on the council and you were running for council, I said, this son of a gun, he's, you know, he was out there campaigning, I said, this son of a gun. And then when he got on the council, I said, you know what? He adds a lot to this council. He has a lot of integrity. He cares about this community. And as members said behind this reel, no matter what side of the issue, Rick was always respectable. And that's one thing that I take, Rick, and I'm proud to call you my friend. And honestly, I hope that you will maintain your leadership role in this community because we do need leaders. You know, when the Chamber of Commerce didn't have a president, it was Rick Carviallo that stood up and took over the reins in order for small business to be represented. And that's a lot of work and a lot of effort. And those type of things go unnoticed. And I just want to thank you, my friend. And I'm sure you'll be active in the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It'd be from the governor.
Poor and wood, it comes from the...
From the hive.
From the hive. You don't know what these things are anyway, so, you know. Everything that had to be said about Counselor Carviallo, I think, has been said. And I would only be redundant. On behalf of the delegation, on a personal note, I'm gonna say that the delegation is here to work with the incoming President Baer and the incoming Vice President Counselor Collins. We look forward to continuing our relationship with the City Council and with the administration here in the city of Medford. That said, let me say something about my friend. We have known each other for a number of years, basically growing up in the same area in South Medford. But in addition to that, being members of the Kiwanis Club. So that, you know, when we talk about all of the things that Rick has done as President of the Chamber of Commerce and his involvement in the arts program and involvement in the, in the building of the, of the library. He also stood up at the same time to be a member and to be President of the Medford Kiwanis Club. And that's the kind of dedication that Counselor Carviallo, Rick, has done in his involvement in this community for decades. And I am so proud that we had the opportunity to learn from each other and to nurture each other with regard to what was going on in the community. And I used to kid Rick, I thought I went to everything, but I know that Counselor Carviallo would go to an envelope opening if there was one available. And so that he was there for the people. He was there to make sure that when anyone needed assistance, he was there in the forefront to have it done. Many times he approached me and said, if you know anybody, as Counselor Knight said, if you know anyone who needs a food basket, turkey? And he had no problem going to the supermarket saying that, you know, we need turkeys, we need food for Thanksgiving, Christmas, for the elderly, for those who are in need. I know in my heart, for the many years that I've known him, that he's not gonna stop. He's gonna continue to do what is in the best interest of this community. You're gonna hear from Rick Carviallo, maybe in a different way, maybe in a way that you're gonna say, gee, he did what he had to do as a City Councilor to make it so that this community fostered what was important to him. But at the same time, he's going to continue to do all of the things that he did, not only as a counselor, but as a member of the Kiwanis and as a member of this community. So, on behalf of our colleagues in the delegation, I would like to take, I'm not even gonna read it because it's the same thing that you have all said to everyone in this community. I say it from my heart to you, Rick, for all of the wonderful things you have done. You made me proud to be your friend, but more important, you made me proud that we had the opportunity in the beginning to learn from each other and help you become a great City Councilor, so.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
There were enough. I think it's ahead of me now.
I'll hand it over to you, Counselor Carviallo.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for everybody, for the kind words, former colleagues, present colleagues and everyone else. But it's been, it's been an honor to serve the residents of this community for the past 12 years. I never once thought this was a job, was something that I wanted to do. And as I said, when Terry Carter interviewed me for an interview, he says, how did you get involved? And I said, you know, I said, I was like kind of a young kid, 45 years old and I was kind of at the crossroads, you know, I was a young kid and a friend invited me to a Kiwanis meeting. And I got to sit with Paul and back then, there was, you know, like 80, 90 people, but they were all pillars of the community. And I'd sit there and I listened to their stories and I said, geez, I'd like to be that person one day. And Paul mentored me along and here I am today. So, I thank the Kiwanis for really getting me involved with the community and showing me what community involvement was all about. Because I didn't come from, you know, it's not something that I did, my dad didn't do it either, so. They taught me community involvement, so I thank my friends at the Kiwanis for that. But I've had a lot of good accomplishments. As you said, I've worked out in the library like four or five years. I didn't do it by myself, you know. I thank Mayor Burke for taking something from a counselor, which no mayor has ever done in the city, and actually brought it to a reality. And I thank Mayor Burke for doing that. And, you know, even with the art center, I know Counselor Marks, he was a trailblazer on that. And when that call came in, I knew right away who needed the property. And who do I call? I called another colleague, Counselor Marks. And we got, and we got the ball rolling on that. So, those are real, two real things I've did, real proud of. But I've also done some, you know, I'm real proud of some of the veterans' things I did. Who in the world would ever know where to find an elevator for free? All right, really? We got a call and the lady said, you know, I need an elevator for my house. I'm saying, what am I supposed to do? I made a couple of calls and like, in three hours, I had an elevator. And I called, and I called them back, I says, remember Christmas, I says, we're gonna have an elevator for you. And we got people to put it in for free. And this was from a guy who hadn't been out of this house in four years. We also, we did a home of a veteran, what apparently started. And we got together with the community and volunteers and did almost $300,000 worth of work in this house free. So, and I say, I started, you know, we did the food program, but it's just things I've done over the years. And so, I don't know how they came to pass, but they just, they did. And I'm just, I'm happy that I've been able to serve the community. I don't want to belate at the point, but I served under three mayors. You know, Counselor Marks and maybe we weren't the best of friends when we got on the council because he was, you know, I was the new, I was the, even though I was older than him, I was the new guy, I was the new guy on the council. But, you know, over the years, we've been good friends, you know, Counselor Delarussue, Counselor Falco, Counselor Penta, Counselor Mayorkas, Counselor Moose. I've shared with a lot of good people, including the people that are sitting here tonight. And, you know, these are memories I'll have forever and ever. And listen, we're likely in the next few months, who knows? But I'll always be around for anybody that ever needs San David. So, thank you and thank you everybody for all the kind words you said tonight. And I said, I'll miss everybody.
Do you want to do it? You do it.
You got your phone? Yeah.
Yes, Counselor Carviallo, gonna add.
Thank you, Madam President. I think as we all know, doing this job takes a ton, really takes a toll on your family and your family life. So, I want to thank my family here tonight for all the birthdays and games and stuff that I miss over the years. I'm around for that stuff now. So, thank you for my family for putting up with me over the years for all this stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Carviallo. Going through 2347, oh, sorry, on the motion. This guy, President. On the motion of Vice President Baer is seconded by Counselor Seng. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. Going through 23472, offered by Vice President Baer. Be it resolved by the Medford City Council that we commend Counselor Knight for his outstanding service on the Medford City Council from 2014 to 2024. Vice President Baer.
Thank you, Madam President. I have been lucky enough to have Counselor Knight here to tell me everything I'm doing wrong, every meeting quietly, which is what I appreciated. And occasionally even to give me a heads up in advance when he knew I was gonna do something wrong, so I could correct course before I made the mistake and embarrassed myself. That's my personal thing to say about having Counselor Knight sitting next to me for my first four years on this council. But in addition to being a great colleague, he's incredibly devoted to this city and to the institution of the Medford City Council in a way that I hope that I can at least take a piece of and continue into the future. He knows not just the history of the council since he's been on it, but the history of the council before that. He deeply cares about the city of Medford and seeing it go in the right direction. And he is nothing if not persistent and passionate in that cause. Similarly to Counselor Carviallo, Counselor Knight is a father and he has been many nights away from his family in this chamber, serving the people of Medford when he may, at least maybe some of the time, would have wanted to be there with his family. And that sacrifice does not go unnoticed and unremarked this evening. He's got a legal mind for the state laws and the city ordinances. He always brings up that subtle point of procedure or the rules or the, or the, or court, you know, precedent for us to consider. And he always wants to make sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's so that when we pass things as this council, that they are enduring and that they live in the history of our city for a long time. And I have appreciated learning as much as I can from him in the time that I've been able to sit next to him. So, I just want to thank you, Counselor Knight, for your service to the city and for what you've been able to share with me.
Counselor Carviallo.
Thank you, Madam President. Unlike many other people, I knew Counselor Knight when he was Adam in a Young Man With My Son. So, we have a little history going back, but Adam's probably one of the smartest people I know on this council. He knows the rules, he knows the laws. And anytime I ever had a question of anything, he'd be the guy I called all the time. His knowledge of everything in government, just, just from all that. I wish I knew half of what he knew. But let's say, you know, but he's been, he's been a dedicated servant in government for his whole life. That's where his family came from. He served at the Center of Shame with my son. They worked together in government offices. So, and I know the toll that, he's got a young family, I know the toll that it's taken on him over the years. And I just wanted to thank him for his time and dedication to the city. And I think he'll be around when people need him for things, like myself. We're born and raised here, the Mustang runs, Mustang blue runs through our veins. And he'll always be here, like myself, always be here with a phone call away when anyone...
15 minutes later I'd get something back and say, wow, that's great, I, but that's nothing of what I sent you. You know, it's when I first started running for school committee, one of the first phone calls I made was to a young man named Adam Knight. And he was amazing. And he helped mold that team that started my journey as an elected official more than 16 years ago. And, um, I admire your passion. I admire your, 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 what people don't realize is your strong integrity and what's right. And it's something that we laugh about and, you know, I'm not going to lie to you, Adam, the last couple of months, we've had a few jokes behind your back and, and, uh, and I, and I tell you, but people don't realize, when he first got angry because somebody moved all of his paperwork, people don't realize that's years, years of organizing. And if Adam needed anything, if I said something, I, and I'm like, jeez, I don't know where to look for it. I'd look at Adam and he would know exactly out of a mound of pile of paperwork that he knew exactly where to go to help. And he probably still has it right now. Right? So I think that knowing the Knight family, and I was fortunate to know his dad and know his beautiful wife and his kids, um, I think this is good for Adam. I think that the last year that he had has been very difficult. He's been true to what you're supposed to be and what we should all admire too, is a family man that supported his brother through probably his most difficult time. And, um, you know, I wish people would know what you've gone through. Um, but as a friend, like I said, my first phone call, then my second phone call to get whether your approval or your understanding or you're, you correcting me, I appreciate that, my friend. And like I said, there's a common denominator tonight that, um, I'm sad because I'm not going to see you on a regular basis, that we're going to be mandated to see each other at least every other Tuesday. But I'm proud that we're friends and, um, uh, I'm proud that my, my kids get to be around Adam Knight because he's a great role model. I know my daughter, Jana, loves him and his family. And, um, I know John is, uh, at Merrimack and, uh, he's following Adam's footsteps out of Merr, out of Merrimack. And I know how much Dina loves both you and, and Rick and, uh, what you guys have done for our community. Um, I'm going to miss you, my friend. And, uh, but I thank this opportunity because, um, I have, I have a good friend that I feel I can count on for the rest of my life. So, uh, thank you.
Thank you. We have a few more counselors, including myself, but we're going to go to Rep Donato first because he has to, he has to go. So we're going to jump the line.
Tough time.
Just going to wait for the mic or to, yeah, hit the button on the mic.
First time here? Oh yeah, that's good.
Oh, no, don't hit it again.
There you go.
There you go.
Okay. I apologize, I thank the members of the city council, giving me the opportunity to, uh, be before them. I have my grandson with me who is, uh, on, uh, flying to Florida and, uh, to visit his family so that, uh, I will have the opportunity to, uh,
I hope his arms don't get tired.
Now, you notice, uh, Madam President, I didn't even.
Get it? No? All right, kid.
And I can say this, uh, Counselor Scapelli, if you want to see both Counselor, uh, uh, Carviallo and, uh, Counselor Knight, uh, as, uh, uh, cause you'll miss him, come to De Metz in the morning and buy, buy, and buy the coffee. And buy the coffee.
Okay.
Out of respect, Counselor Knight, and I will not tell you how long ago it was that he walked the streets for me when I was campaigning for the Medford School Committee and the Medford City Council. That's how long we have known each other. Um, and how much respect that I have for him and his understanding of what the rules and the regulations are for the council members to understand and his understanding of the laws that govern our communities and govern our state. He is, as the, as the Vice President said, he has on a number of occasions indicated that the council was working, working in the wrong direction. And the direction was based upon his knowledge of what the rules are for the council and what the laws are of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Sometimes people would say, he talks so fast, they didn't understand what he was saying. But, but he did that on purpose because he didn't want you to understand what he was saying. He's been doing that for the 35 years that, uh, we've known each other. So, uh, it's, it's his dedication to this community will not go unnoticed. There's going to be a time that, uh, Counselor Knight will come to this community once again and say, this is the way things should be done in our community. I have worked hard to do it. He has demonstrated that in his work with the, the late Senator Shannon and the, the dedication that he had with his friend who was the governor's counselor, Michael Callahan, for many, many years. So his involvement in, in the inner workings of the government in this community, he knows what he's talking about and how to get it done. And you will miss, you will miss, Mr. Vice President, Mr. President. You, you, you'll, you'll be banging the gavel and you'll be looking down at that seat and waiting for Counselor Knight to say, Mr. President, that's not the correct motion for that particular issue. So Adam, thank you for everything that you've done for our community. Thank you for your friendship. Thank you for your time campaigning for me. I love you. Madam President, we have not known each other for that long a period of time, but I have observed the dedication that you have to this community and what you represent as a sincere, honest, dedicated individual and has demonstrated to this council and to the public, your ability to be a conscientious president of this city council. And you should be proud of the fact that you have been there and handling these counselors. And there are difficult times, not only with the counselors, but with the public at large. You've done it honorably. You've done it with integrity and I'm proud to know you. And I know that, uh, even though you're going to stay home, take care of your family, you're still going to be involved in this community. And I thank you for your work on behalf of our delegation.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Counselor Knight, for briefly sharing. So we'll go to Counselor Seng.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Counselor Knight, Adam, for all your service on the city council. Um, I, I think at home and both, both at home and behind the rails, I think people often see the verbal jousting, but people don't see that I, like you inspire me. Out of all the counselors here, um, you, you're, you're so smart, so witty and so funny. And you brighten up all my Tuesdays. And I've, I've been, I know it's been a difficult, um, last few months, but I've been missing you quite a bit. Um, being, you know, being in the council chambers with you is like for me going back to school. And like, I'm constantly pushed to be better, to do my homework even more, to study and to be prepared, um, because you're just so prepared and so on top of things whenever you walk into the council chambers. Um, I think people, um, should appreciate all the work that you've done for the city. All, you know, you fight the hard fight for, for workers, for working people in the city. I think you oftentimes question, um, ask the right questions and get us to think more, more deeply about what actions we're taking, what we're not doing, why we're not doing things. And I think, you know, that voice is just so important to us in this chamber, um, to have that compass for us in this community. Um, I really like, there's, there's so much I have to thank you for, for, um, for this term, for the lessons I've learned on the city council and for a lot of what I want to do in the future. Um, you've pushed me to be a lot better. And so I really appreciate that. And I, I'm sure Medford appreciates it too, because you, you've pushed Medford to become a better place. Um, we're going to need, um, that same tenacity, that same, that same fire and passion, um, in the future. And, but I know you'll stay around it. I know you'll stay involved.
Thank you. Counselor Collins.
Uh, Counselor Knight, we're sorry to see you go. You leave big shoes to fill on this council. Um, I know a lot of people have remarked upon it, but your depth of institutional knowledge has been such an asset to this council in the two years that I've been involved. We're going to need somebody to step up and learn every line of parliamentary procedure to save us from those future kind of borderline situations where we're like, oh, is it a simple or a super majority? Um, because we, we always thought, counted on you to know that. But, um, in all seriousness, I think that, um, you know, your, your respect and your affection for the city is spelled in the rigor that you've always brought to this role. You have a razor sharp sense of right and wrong. You don't suffer fools gladly. And I think that there's been many, there's been many topics that we've discussed on the council, um, many papers that we've deliberated where that has been, um, an asset to the outcomes because you've always been focused on, um, making sure that the city is headed in the right direction and that the council is doing the right thing, that the council is doing its job as you see it. And, um, that's always been very clear and I, as one council, have always appreciated it. So best of luck to you and your family and everything that lies before you. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Counselor Knight, um, as has been said by most of us or all of us, you make everyone on this council better. No matter the resolution I introduce, no matter how innocuous or how controversial, part of my preparation is trying to get into your head and think as best as I can every legal procedural historical argument that you're going to make. And I'm not sure I've ever gotten all of them, but I think I've started to get close. And I know that your skill and tenacity demands the same of every single counselor behind this rail. Um, as everyone has said, there is no denying how smart you are and how you know your stuff. And on the off chance that you don't know your stuff, you know how to present it in a way that makes the rest of us question if we know our stuff. So you, you keep us on our toes for sure, and that will be missed. Um, your dedication to Medford, to the workers of Medford, to labor, your knowledge and your humor will be greatly missed in this body. Um, I'm sad to see you go, but it's been great to have you back if only for a few meetings and remind us kind of what was missing, that little, that, that salt, that something that was missing that keeps us all awake and engaged. So I, I thank you for your service and excited and nervous to see what you do next. And we'll go to Counsel, former Counselor Marks and then anyone else.
Thank you, Madam President. And I too want to thank, uh, Counselor Knight for his, uh, friendship and as many years of service. As you stated, uh, Madam President, uh, there's been no bigger advocate for working families in this community than Counselor Knight. Um, I got to be honest, I learned so much regarding, uh, living wages and, uh, rights of workers from listening to Counselor Knight over the years. Uh, it made me a better counselor. And, uh, I know over the years, uh, when he first got on, uh, he was a young man at the time, and he's still a young man, but, um, you know, some of us said, oh, here's some fresh meat coming onto the council. And before you knew it, we had our own parliamentarian. I mean, it was Counselor Knight, honestly, that, uh, knew the rules and regulations inside and out. And the only way I could combat, uh, his knowledge was I thought if I spoke louder that I, I would, I would win the debate. And that was my attack when I, when we used to go at it, he'd, he'd bring up rules and regulations, facts and figures, and I would mostly yell and raise my voice. And I, I felt that I won the argument, but I knew all the time that I never won the argument because he was armed, uh, better than I was. And I, I just want to thank you, uh, for your years of service, Counselor. Uh, it was a pleasure getting to know you, the, the person who you are, the family man, uh, the care that you have for this community, and I hope to see you around the community. Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak? Counselor Knight?
Uh, well, Madam President, uh, thank you very much. I didn't realize that subtlety was such a strong suit of mine, but apparently a couple of my colleagues feel so it is. No, who would have thunk it? How back in 2013 when I, when I was elected to the city council that I was the liberal? But, uh, but thank you. That, that, thank you for all the kind words that you said. Um, you know, it, it's kind of weird getting out of the, 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 the public life, getting out of electoral politics and, uh, you know, everywhere you go, you hear people coming up to you, thank you for your service, thank you for your service, thank you for your service. And I'm looking at them like they're crazy, so I'm not a veteran. I don't know what you're talking about. Thank you for your service. It feels wrong to me. Um, it feels like I should be the one saying thank you. Um, truly, uh, serving the residents of this community as a member of this council has been in all of it, truly has. And, uh, and it's been a great run. Um, I'm very proud of the work that together we've been able to accomplish and very thankful for the friendships I've been able to make along the way. Uh, you know, I wish the incoming council the best of luck. And, uh, I thank my past and current colleagues, uh, for their service and work. Uh, we've had a lot of laughs, we've done a lot of good for this community and, uh, we've always kept Medford in the forefront. Um, to my family, they've been great, uh, sacrificed a lot to allow me this opportunity and it's something I'll be forever grateful for. Um, it's nice to see my old colleagues here, my old friends, um, Counselor Marks and I had a number, a number of great debates, uh, right in these chambers. Um, thank God for TV3 because, uh, we can go back and watch them and laugh at, uh, what donkeys we were making of ourselves as we picket back and forth. Um, I'm, I'm upset that Representative Donato had to leave because, uh, I remember back a number of years ago, my grandfather was still with us and, uh, I went over to the house all excited. I'm a young kid and I'm working on a political campaign and I grabbed my grandfather and I'm saying, hey, grandpa, we got to help this guy Paul Donato. He's running for state rep and you know, he's my friend. And Donato, guy's a bum. I said, what do you mean? Said, I'm not supporting Donato. I said, grandpa, what are you talking about? Now, this is, you know, 2000 or so. And I said, grandpa, what are you talking about? He ran against my friend Dennis McKenna in 1982. I'm not supporting that guy, he said to me. So if that tells you anything about the Knights and the way that we approach politics, um, you know, sometimes we have a long memory. Um, but with that being said, um, this has been a job that
and very thankful for the friendships I've been able to make along the way. Uh, you know, I wish the incoming councillor best of luck. And, uh, I thank my past and current colleagues, uh, for their service and work. Uh, we've had a lot of laughs. We've done a lot of good for this community. And, uh, we've always kept Medford in the forefront. Uh, to my family, they've been great. Uh, sacrificed a lot to allow me this opportunity. And it's something I'll be forever grateful for. Um, it's nice to see my old colleagues here, my old friends, um, councillor Marks and I had a number, a number of great debates, uh, right in these chambers. Um, thank God for TV3, because, uh, we can go back and watch them and laugh at, uh, what donkeys we were making of ourselves as we picket back and forth. Um, I'm, I'm upset that Representative Donato had to leave because, uh, I remember back a number of years ago, my grandfather was still with us. And, uh, I went over to the house all excited. I'm a young kid and I'm working on a political campaign. And I grabbed my grandfather and I'm saying, hey, grandpa, we gotta help this guy Paul Donato. He's running for state rep and you know, he's my friend. And Donato, guy's a bum. So what do you mean? Said, I'm not supporting Donato. I said, grandpa, what are you talking about? Now, this is, you know, 2000 or so. And I said, grandpa, what are you talking about? He ran against my friend Dennis McKenna in 1982. I'm not supporting that guy, he said to me. So if that tells you anything about the Knights and the way that we approach politics, um, you know, sometimes we have a long memory. Um, but with that being said, um, this has been a job that I had never considered work. Um, I considered it something that I love to do, a form of service and an opportunity for me to give back to a city that's given me so much. And, uh, sitting here tonight, being able to reflect on all the good that we've been able to accomplish together, um, is truly rewarding. And I thank you all, uh, for being here this evening. And, uh, thank the people that, uh, put me in the seat, because, uh, without them, it never would have been possible. Uh, most importantly though, um, I do have to again reiterate the thanks to my family, uh, and my campaign team for all the work that they put forward over the years. Um, it's a very difficult job. And there's two jobs when you get involved in this type of business. And, uh, if you don't do the first job, good. It doesn't matter how good you are at the second job. And the first job is getting elected. And nobody can do that alone. And you're only as good as the team that you have around you. You get elected and you get in the seat, then you gotta earn your bonus. Uh, but if you can't do the first job right, you're never gonna be able to get a chance to do the second job. And, uh, my campaign committee worked tirelessly, tirelessly, uh, over the last decade to ensure that I had this opportunity. And, uh, for that, I will be forever grateful.
And I want to note for the record, we will, you will get your chair. You will get your chair. The only councillor to ever get a chair and a clock. Councilor Knight.
The clock is to count down to the chair. So on the motion of Vice President Behrs, seconded by Councilor Collins, all is in favor.
Aye.
All is opposed. Motion passes. Two, three, four, seven, three, offered by Vice President Behrs, be resolved by the Medford City Council that we commend President Morrell for her outstanding service on the Medford City Council from 2020 to 2024. Vice President Behrs.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, it has been noted multiple times on what remains of the public discourse of the city, that I only got the most votes in the last election because you didn't run.
I'd said that.
I don't know, I don't know who the anonymous commenters are. If they are you, I understand. Um, but I really cannot, um, begin to talk about what it's meant to serve with you. Um, we ran together in our first campaign. We got elected. Um, we came onto this council in January 2020. And, you know, I think all of the things, the kind things that have been said about councillor Carvillo, councillor Knight, uh, councillor Marks two years ago, um, and also some of the funny ones, we experienced them directly. We experienced this very specific legalisms of councillor Knight, the history and the knowledge of councillor Carvillo, the history and the knowledge and loud speaking of councillor Marks. Um, and we experienced it together. And I don't know that if I had been elected just on my own without having you been elected alongside me, that I would have handled it a quarter as well as I was able to, uh, sharing, um, that, uh, those first few months and, and what am I kidding? Those first two years, um, without being able to serve alongside you. Um, you are incredibly devoted to this city. You came to this city and you made it your home. And you said, if I'm gonna make this my home, I wanna make it better and I wanna devote my time to that. Um, you have devoted immense time to this council, to your colleagues, uh, to, uh, the pursuit of bold ideas, um, of, of ideas that we hadn't tried before, ideas that had been put on the table and hadn't made their way through the process. Um, and we've accomplished a lot and you've accomplished a lot, um, over the past four years. I think especially to note, um, that you've served four years, but two of those as president, um, is, uh, is important to note as well, that you have led this council, uh, this term with aplomb. We have accomplished an incredible amount. We have been an incredibly civil council. Um, I think if you, we go back and look at the TV3 records, only five to 10% of the time, but we have been making donkeys out of ourselves. And I think that's, uh, a testament to state leadership and, and leadership that, uh, brings our focus back to the issues at hand. Um, I have been very lucky to serve with you. And I am not sure what it's going to mean. As, as councillor Scarpelli noted, oh, President Zach Behrs, I don't know what it means to be a councillor without President Nicole Morrell, councillor Nicole Morrell. And, um, while I invite all of my former colleagues to call me and tell me what I'm doing wrong, um, if you all do it at the same time, I'm gonna take her call first. So, um, thank you, thank you, thank you. And I, uh, I hope that we'll be able to pull you back in.
Thank you. This is a funny position to like calling people to say nice things. Councilor Collins.
Maybe this will be one of the, uh, one of the last very long list of, um, unenviable tasks in your tenure as president of the city council is calling on people to then speak about you. Um, well, Nicole, it's hard to know where to start, um, in congratulating you on your two terms. Um, surely this must be one of the, the densest tenures of any Medford city councillor to serve two years during a pandemic and then two as president. It's, it's pretty remarkable what you've been able to accomplish, um, in your two terms. And I think, you know, a phrase that I, I heard from you, that I learned from you is occupying spaces that weren't designed for people like you. Um, I think often about how, um, you're running for city council two years before I did in, uh, completely certain terms paved the way for myself and people like me to think about engaging in civic life in ways that were not traditional, that never felt possible or likely. Um, and that's a gift that you gave to not just myself for this opportunity, but for, uh, the community of Medford, for allowing, you know, representation to blossom and become better and become more representative. Um, and, you know, as that continues to expand and to blossom over time, uh, you will have been a crucial ingredient that, in that for, you know, as for future generations of Medford city councils. Um, I think you, I think it, it deserves repeating that you've presided over, um, a really effective, a really civil, a friendlier council than has always been true. And I think that's a real benefit to the effectiveness of this council. I think that's a benefit to the community. I think that it makes, um, city hall a more welcoming and inclusive space. And that's just so important. And that will continue after you as well. Um, you've set in motion, uh, so many projects that I, I hope that you can really feel the gravity of as you leave office. Um, you were pushing for our zoning overhaul for two years before I was ever elected. And that's going to be a defining feature of the term ahead. Um, in so many ways, you've teed us up for, you've, you've teed up the future council, perhaps the council after that, um, for success with the, with the projects that you've advocated for, that you've worked for, with the relationships that you've cultivated with members of, uh, with city hall staff, um, and with the, um, the new and better expectations that we have come to set for this city council and that residents and staff have come to set for this city council. So, um, my hope for you is that, um, you feel as positive and as proud about your tenure on city council as everybody else does. Um, because, uh, it's, it's a gift to leave us in such a position to be, um, so much more effective and inclusive, um, in our future work. So, thank you for that. Thank you for the sacrifices that you've made to be here. Um, and I know that your life after city council will continue to be extremely full and busy, doing incredible work on MIT campus, as well as taking care of, uh, cutest two-year-old in Medford. Um, but I too hope that, um, we can lure you back in, in the future. Thank you so much, Nicole.
Thank you. Councillor Carvillo.
Thank you, Madam President. So, as councillor, I mean, Representative Donato, I don't know you as well as I know. Uh, I mean, I've only known you for the last four or five years. And, but, uh, you know, Councillor Morrell came out of nowhere. She burst onto the scene, new face, no, not being, uh, you know, this is, for those who have, don't have a global community, very tough to break into being an outsider, coming in and breaking into the scene. And, uh, she did that very well with grace and honor. And in a short time, um, she became president. And being a past president, uh, I know the sacrifices that it makes, that it takes to be a president. People think she should show up and do it tonight. She gets a lot more calls than anyone even knows, and everything. And, and she did it while she was, uh, becoming a new mother also. So, uh, thank you for, you know, uh, your, your family giving, letting you come in even while you were having a child. So thank you for that. But, but you, uh, you pursue women's rights and you, you made sure that everybody had a voice here. And, um, I thank you for that. And, um, hopefully you'll, uh, like the other people, you won't disappear. Uh, you'll be around and you'll be, uh, for that phone call be made or maybe come back again, uh, do something better. So thank you for your service and thank you for your family for letting, for giving us to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Scarpelli. Saving out for the last.
No, I, uh, I, Councillor Morrell, I just, councillor president. Um, I'm honored to call you president. I think I've reached out to you, some tough meetings. And I wanted to, you know, publicly say that you've handled yourself with grace and honor. And I think you've been a true leader to this council. Like councillor Carvillo said, it's not, it's not easy when you, 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 your community is viewed as, as divided. You know, the new metric, the old metric. Um, and I would get phone calls, imagine this Morrell. I said, imagine this Morrell. Imagine this, imagine Nicole Morrell would take an opportunity to stand up and run for an office that's not traditionally, uh, for an independent, strong woman, and come in and do what you've done. I thank you because you give my daughter, um, the, the, the understanding that you can reach for anything you want. And, um, we haven't seen eye to eye to everything, but it was always out of respect. And what people don't understand is that it's for a reason. And Nicole Morrell doesn't go home at night. He tell people, you, yeah, but Nicole definitely goes home at night. How can I destroy that? It, it, it became comical at, at times. And I think you've stood up and you have taken the leadership with, 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 uh, with honor, with grace, with distinction. And, uh, I'm proud that I've served with you. Um, I think that the most honorable thing in life, um, I think I've, in my life that I've ever seen, has watched my wife raise our two amazing kids. And tonight, it like kicked me like a mule, watching you with your baby and understand the huge sacrifices. And I, I remember the nights that you'd have to run out of here for 20 minutes and run back. And people didn't know why, but you were mum first. And you've taken this hiatus. I know that, um, that when, when, uh, everything moves forward like, like we expect and have a positive, um, you know, growth with your, your, your beautiful son and, um, that you'll be back. And I think that, uh, we appreciate the, the four years that you've given us. And I appreciate you, um, you being our leader. And I think that, uh, I, I, I hope that we do see you around still. And I'm sure that if you see me go the wrong way, that, um, one, one thing people don't realize, I don't think is how tough you are. And Scott, George Scottfett likes to speak, like, he was, people think I yell. Yeah, I'm yelling at people. I don't yell at people. This is how I, I, I speak. Ask my wife. I just, I just talk loud. And, and it's great because you give it right back. And, uh, there were some things me and you would talk about right here. And you say, oh, yeah? Did you forget two years ago? And I'm like, oh, wow. And I'm like, ooh, ooh. But it's out of respect. And I appreciate that because I think that, um, I think that's what this council is so great about. We've, we've done some great things and we've respected, we've, we've respected each other enough to agree to disagree, but not cross the line. And, uh, and so I thank you and I wish you much luck and happiness, um, at home and, uh, enjoying your, your beautiful son. And, um, and I'm sure we'll see you around. So I appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Singh.
Um, I'm gonna miss you so much, President Morrell. I'm gonna miss calling you my president. Um, oh, lots of love to use that too, but. Yeah, I, I will miss her though. I, I think you know that. Um, I think a lot's been said about your honor and grace. I remember when, before I even thought about running for office, when there was so much going on with the pandemic and with Black Lives Matter, I remember watching all those very contentious city council meetings. And I didn't know you at the time, but I was like, huh, this, like Nicole Morrell person gets where I'm coming from, like what my experience growing up in Medford was. And, you know, I, I think like, it, it surprised me so much because it's just so rare for people like me to see, um, your views being represented and your perspective being considered, um, especially by people who didn't come from the same background as me. And, um, it was just, I think, so cool. And I think beyond just honor and grace for me, it was seeing you stay, um, stay true to your convictions as well, even when the conversations were heated and difficult and when it would be easier to back out. You, as George has mentioned, you've always stayed in the fight and you've, um, you've led with your convictions as well. And I think you've shown us that you can lead with your convictions and also build civility and unity and harmony here behind the rail. And I, you know, it's not an easy job. I wouldn't want it. Uh, but, and you've, you've had to, um, stand up here through some really difficult meetings. But the grace, the kind of, um, the poise that you've led with is something that I think people at home, especially girls and young mothers at home, really look at politics and, and see that you can do a good job even when it gets tough. Um, and can really be inspired by. You also, I think, have laid out a path for our city and for, um, for progressives especially, that shows us that you can have a, you can have a progressive vision that's, you know, tailored to, um, our local needs and addressing what we, um, you know, what we need street by street. And I, I think that kind of attitude has really been leading the city council in the last few years. And Kit talked a lot about the achievements of this council from zoning to all the ordinances to a lot of projects that we're kickstarting. Um, I think it's a testament to you that, um, to your leadership that, you know, we have been able to really pursue progressive change in a way that touches people personally. And, um, it's furthermore another testament upon you that candidates are running and I'm looking forward to carrying a lot of the ideas that you set in place in the first, uh, in, in, in your four years here on the city council. Um, I think beyond that, I'm gonna miss just having a friend to look up to. Literally look up to. Um, I think it, it's always nice to talk to you when things get heated because I think I can, I can trust you to have a rational viewpoint of things. And I, I can trust you to make a millennial joke that I don't, that 100% get. And I can, I can trust that we'll have, we'll, we'll banter around about millennial and Gen Z slang. And, you know, it's just like those funny moments that take you out of the heat and out of the seriousness and make, make all of us sing. And, um, I know this will not be the end. I know you're gonna stay involved. I'm looking forward to the days when you're back here. Um, and if you're not back here in the council chambers, I'm looking forward to being at Jackson on Burationist Day.
Thank you. Councillor Knight.
Is there any water in this thing? This is gonna be long. Madam President, congratulations. Uh, it's been a great run as well. Um, maybe not as long as councillor Carvillo and I, uh, but that's because you chose, uh, to not make it that long. Um, you could have served in the city council for as long as you felt like it. Um, I don't know if you guys know this, but councillor Morrell might be a tad competitive. She doesn't show it, but she might be a tad competitive. Um, very tenacious on the campaign trail. Um, I've talked to several of my neighbors and they said they voted for her just because she wouldn't get off her porch. Gonna have to vote for her because she keeps coming back and she won't get off my porch. Um, and, you know, and that, and that strategy worked out very well for the councillor, um, as evident by her vote totals. And, um, when she first got elected to the council after, uh, her first foray into public office, um, we had a nice discussion when she came up here and we invited her up as, uh, a councillor-elect to observe. And, uh, I said to Nicole, that she had a very, very, very important decision that she had to make that's gonna shape her future here on the Medford City Council. This decision that she makes is probably gonna be the most important decision that she makes as a city council. And she had to choose where she wanted to sit, next to me or next to councillor Max.
wanted to sit, next to me or next to Counselor Marks. And.
It was tough.
Apparently, apparently, uh, subtlety is not one of her strong spots either. And, um, I lost, I lost out on that one, Counselor Marks. Um, and since that time, she tells me that your private whisper conversations with Counselor Baer's aren't whispers at all. I can hear you all the way over here. Um, so with that, with that being said, congratulations, Counselor Marks. You're responsible, um, for, for helping shape and mold, uh, President right now. Uh, but a, as I sit here and I see you there, um, and don't take this the wrong way, Counselor, but I feel as though your talents are, talents are wasted at the chair. Um, you're an excellent City Council, very capable on the council floor and very formidable debater. Um, I enjoyed the time, um, where you'd step away from the chair and step down on the floor because you've always brought forward, um, well thought out arguments, um, that were rooted in fact, not fiction, um, that were supported by, uh, data, not drama. Um, and, uh, that helps move this body along. Um, so with that being said, uh, thank you very much for your approach to the office and, uh, for the way that you, uh, handle yourself and tried to handle this body. Um, it's impossible to hurt a bag of cats and you did the best you can with what you got here. Um, you know, we've had some great, we've had some great meetings and, um, we've had, we've had some, uh, some very, very, um, what we could say colorful meetings, um, over the past four years. And, um, you've handled yourself with, with great dignity and great respect. You've carried yourself, um, in a fashion that's admirable and, um, you're certainly, uh, worthy to wield that gavel and worthy to carry the title Counselor. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve you.
Thank you. Former Counselor Marks.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, it was an honor and pleasure. We only served for one term together. Um, I, I can tell you the first six months that Nicole sat next to me, um, I, I don't think she said hi to me for six months. Uh, and I didn't know if it was me or she was new on the job and trying to feel her way around. And, uh, I think our very first debate, uh, was a difficult one because we were sitting next to each other. And I may have taken some liberties at the time and you turned around and literally snapped at me. And, and like, a- after that, I think I, I was like walking on a tightrope the whole time. I was, I was, what's she gonna do next? You know, I was, I was, I was kind of in fear, to be honest. Um, it, uh, you know, I, I, I believe that, um, when you've got on the council, uh, your intentions were always to move the city forward. Uh, I also believe that you were even-handed, you were willing to listen, which I, I think goes a long way. We may not agree, but if you know someone's at least listening, uh, that means a lot. And, um, you know, the, the one thing that I didn't agree with it was the, the leaf blower ordinance. Um, however, I, I think you've surpassed that with the school committee race.
I'm keeping everyone engaged.
At, at the very least. But, um, I, I, I want to thank you for years of service. It takes a lot to do what, uh, elected officials do in this community. I, I think people think, you know, it's an easy task. You come on a Tuesday night and attend some subcommittee meetings and they don't know the hours of reading, the hours of phone calls, the, the really minutia that takes place, uh, to be an effective counselor. And I think you've, you've shown that over the last four years. And, uh, hopefully we're, we're losing a lot of knowledge behind this rail. Hopefully some of that will be spread on with, uh, the existing members. Uh, but I want to thank you for your service and hopefully, uh, you'll, uh, spend some more time with the family, which, uh, I think you'll find equally, if not more important. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, I just want to add, uh, Counselor Marks, uh, remarks to the record about how hard elected officials work and how much they deserve.
Counselor Marks, on that topic, can you tell us what you made when you were in the school?
Thank you, Counselor Marks. I really appreciate you coming up and saying, um, some kind words and some true words. And hopefully now that we're both out of office, I won't get so nervous every time I see you either sitting there approaching, approaching the podium. So, one last time, I appreciate it. Um, I want to thank everyone for their kind words. Um, I truly love this job and there are times that I think I'm not half bad at it. Um, there are times I think I'm terrible at it. There are times I think I'm great, but they all even out in the end. So, deciding not to run this year was one of the hardest decisions I've probably ever had to make. Um, I think as comes through on the council is I usually know exactly how I feel about something. I'm always listening, but I usually know how I feel. I know how I'm gonna vote. And this is something that I, I've really wrestled with, um, for months and, or probably honestly the better part of two years. But like everyone in these seats, I also have a full-time job and I have a favorite constituent who is just about two years old and, um, who has shared, sorry Zach, um, who has shared, who's, who's shared his whole life, uh, with this council. Um, so I'm stepping away to spend more time with him in those early precious years, which I know you all know, but I think again, without the lack of paper and all these things, sometimes that's information that's not, um, hasn't been shared. So, I care about this job. I love this job. Um, I care about my son. I love my son. I want to spend some time with him. Um, you know, there's a saying in parenting that the days are long, but the years are short, which I know all the parents here will agree with. Um, and I think I'd like to extend that to City Council where the meetings are long, but the years are short. Um, I, I can't believe it's been four years. I can't believe it's only been four years. I can't believe it's, it's been a long four years and it's been a short four years. Um, I think starting this whole journey just before the pandemic, I know we all have that feeling of time kind of collapsing in on itself. And it feels like so long ago I started in this body, but it's only been, um, just a few years. Um, we did a lot of great work as a council. There's a lot of great work left to be done, a lot of work left to be done. I'm not gonna go through, um, everything we worked on because this isn't a campaign speech, but there's a lot that I'm proud of. Um, and I just want to note that we often say that it's a privilege to do this job. Um, it's a privilege to represent your peers. It's a privilege to serve the public. And, um, beyond that, it's also an extreme privilege to have the opportunity to meet and strike up conversations with and friendships with people that simply wouldn't happen, um, if you didn't have the access and the welcome that this role gives you. Um, and so I think every person that I've spoken with for that, whether we agreed or not, the ability to sit down with someone or pick up a phone call, um, and have a conversation with something has been a privilege and, and really a gift. And another gift, which, you know, there are nights, I can't believe I'm saying this, but it's all of you behind, behind the rails. Um, I think there's something going on in this body, um, since, you know, I think the past two years in particular, that there's a camaraderie and a respect that I think we all know is quickly or has already left much of politics. But I think it's still alive and well behind the rail where has been, has been said, we all don't agree, uh, a lot of times. It gets heated sometimes, but I think at the end of the day, we know there's a deep respect. Um, there's usually, you know, after some of our, even during some of our most challenging meetings, there's a time where we can have a few jokes, um, and, you know, let out some of that tension and remember that we all respect each other and no one here holds, um, holds a grudge. I want to say like very briefly about people going around the room. I've already said my nice things about, uh, Rick and Adam, but, you know, Justin, it's been a pleasure to serve with you and just to have your cerebral and consider approach to everything. And also have a resident Harvard man. Um, Kit, you are the epitome of speak softly and carry a big stick. And I think everyone learned that, uh, one or two budgets ago. Um, and it's just been so good for my soul to, um, have another woman on the council that I can kind of just look at sometimes or, or catch a smile from, um, in it, in those heavy meetings. George, I think it may have taken us a longer path than some to get to that place of friendship, but we got there. And I, I truly respect you and I just, um, we've been able to have some conversations this term in particular, just to say, hey, you know, I don't agree with you on this, but I want you to know it's no hard feelings. And I know you're doing what you think you believe is right. And I, I think that's a, it's a two-way street and I really respect you. Um, and Vice President Baer's, um, when I was first running and working really hard, someone pulled papers on the very last day and I thought, who is this Zach Baer's? Why is he trying to ruin me? Um, and the answer over to that, who is this Zach Baer's is he's a, he's a friend. He's a confidant. He's someone who, when I had a one-week-old, a one-month-old, a one-year-old, allowed me to be in this position as President, who helped with some of the li- the logistics and all those things that go on behind the scene and allowed me to, to serve and fulfill this role and chaired the body as I was home with a, you know, a little tiny newborn, um, for, you know, those first eight weeks. And this is a demanding job. It's a fulfilling job. Um, it's so important and I'm so thankful to the residents who put me into this position, given me the opportunity to do this. Um, I hope you remember me if I decide to come back. And I'm not gonna make Rick's mistake. I'm gonna thank my family who allowed me to be here. I think one of the, I knew I would have the logistical support to be here. I thank my husband for that. Um, but emotionally, it's really hard. And everyone makes that sacrifice, you know, Tuesday, Wednesday, all the nights, all the mornings, all the phone calls. Um, and right now, I want to spend that time with my son. But I do want to say farewell and thank you. And I'm not sure what my next move is, but for better or worse, I can assure you, you are not rid of me yet. So, I thank you all. All right. It was Zach's fault. He said it was gonna be short.
My bad.
Um, on the motion of Vice President Baer seconded by, Counselor Seng, all those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. On the motion of Counselor Carvillo, seconded by Vice President Baer, all those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes, meeting is adjourned.